We'll call a meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Here.
Geary?
Here.
McMullen?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Mayor Beattie.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, we'll move to public comment. If you have a comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have a three-minute time limit. I'll let you know when you've got 30 seconds.
All right. Hi, my name is Robert Leib.
Robert?
Robert Leib, L-E-I-B, as in boy.
Thank you.
Yes. I live at 613 Wisconsin Avenue, and on April 15th, Jeremy and Bill stopped by to tell me that I need to remove my carport and that I put my carport in front of my home only because the alley has been petitioned to be shut down by the neighbors. The neighbors have made it very clear that I'm not to be driving back there. There is grass, there's no, just to the north of me, there's, yeah, fencing, fencing and whatnot, and, you know, barns and whatnot anyways. But then Jeremy told me that he could put up, that I could, we could split the cost, he told me, to, that I could put the driveway or the alley back in, but that's really gonna make my neighbors upset, you know. I don't understand and I don't know what code that I am in violation of. I have not received any paperwork, just to knock on my front door. He was kind enough to give me 90 days to remove the barn, and I just need some clarification there, so.
The, what this came back to was the step-back requirements, from my understanding, where it's so many feet from the, from the front of the lot to the house?
Yes.
And it was in front of that, so.
I'm 35 feet from the center of the road, and then there's, I guess, from what Jeremy was telling me, there's another 20, 20 feet that I can only be four foot or higher, but my neighbors have shrubs that high that are naked, and then you go down to the north of me and there's another barn down there that's even closer to the road than my barn. My, my carport is not in any way, any type of traffic obstacle at all. And I'm just, I mean, I'm new to the, I'm new to this area. I mean, I've texted you, Ms. Mayor, and I just, I just want some clarity, that's all. I mean, if I have to remove it, I'll be happy to, but I could pay the fine and just leave it there if I need to, because I didn't get a permit. I didn't think I needed a permit because it didn't have a foundation, and I asked the neighbors again, and they said it didn't have a foundation and it's on my property and I wouldn't need a permit, so that's why I just didn't involve anyone. Really, what I'd like to do is just leave it there, you know, because I don't think that it's a problem. Except for the neighbor to the north of me who has complained about it, but they've complained that I called them.
30 seconds.
All right, I called them, my grumpy neighbors, because they complain about everything. I put a fence up, I'm trying to better my property, and they complained. They complained about the true green coming out and taking care of my property. It's just a constant complaint with these people. They live on one side, their son lives on the other side of me, and they walk across my property. Anyway, but, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. I know you've looked at it, Jeremy, and have gone there.
I did, so it does violate, like, we, I, so you were out there in very nice carport, and so, but it was out too far, and it was Joe and I went out to the bill inspector, and we talked and said, you know, that maybe you'd come to a meeting, and we said, we don't need to start an enforcement action or anything like that. Very cordial and was giving him 90 days to make a decision. The alley in the back is open and can be opened, so it's a question, and we talked about it at staff level of, you know, what the city's, city's position would be on opening alleys that have never been opened. So, or a variance, our attorney's here, I, I think we talked about, you know, there was a, you can apply for a variance, but I didn't think you'd get it. So that's, I didn't want to have you waste the money, but, so. That's where it's at, if the council would like to go look at it and look at our, at our step-back requirement.
What is the address again? 613 Wisconsin Avenue. Okay.
Any other comments from public on? I think you are on our agenda tonight, so. We can, if you have anything to add for item one?
Yeah.
We can, we can do that. You can do it now or you can do it when we get to that item?
I'll do it now.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Nick Lebov. I live at 613 West Grand. The back of my property is actually considered an alley that comes from the dead end of Short Street, and it ends at my property. And we've had a lot of traffic back there, you know, my wife will be swimming in there back there, and we get people just driving their old 49cc bikes right next to our property. We get people in the middle of the night, sun would be up on our patio. And just as like a safety precaution, I would like to shut it down. I also own the property at the very end of Short Street as well, so. And then I would get people driving through that and, and, no, I just, more as a safety precaution. Now, we do have new renters, I'm not trying to hide anything like that, but it's a rental house, so we never know what we have back there. The address is the Grand Street address, and with us and all the neighbors, we prefer that they park on Grand Street and not behind, because then, you know, we don't want a continuous flow of traffic in and out behind our properties. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we have questions as we discuss, let me call on you again.
Absolutely.
Any other public comment? We will move on to new business then, so item one is ordinance 2024-12, authorizing the vacation of a public city right-of-way for an east-west alley south of 605 to 615 West Grand Street and north of 710 Short Street to Illinois counties of LaSalle and Livingston. Can I get a motion and second?
Second.
Okay. Tim with a motion and Dave Reed with a second. And discussion.
It looks like there's, you know, off of Short Street, there's access to the, but it looks like there's no other access on the west end.
Correct.
And so, it's not really an alley.
The, well, the only thing I was gonna say is, I know, I mean, I grew up on Short Street. The house in the back of 609, I think it's a garage converted to a house. There was always a lady that lived there, and you can see a car parked there in the picture we got. So I was thinking, if anything, maybe close it down beyond that, but there's no other access to that garage other than from Short Street.
Go up to 609 and shut it down after 609?
That's what I would think would be better, just because it would keep people out of his property, and then it would still make that available for 609. Because, I mean, if you look at it, there's still tire tracks in the grass.
Yeah.
I don't know, the lady must have recently moved, I think. It was always the same lady that lived there my entire youth. But, yeah, that's, that's the only concern I have, I don't know if the property owner has been contacted or...
Yes, that's, good.
I mean, other than a letter.
Like, no, they, they're not regaling, so that property, she passed away. So, so the woman that lived back there passed away. The new owner, and it's still an issue that they can't rent that out. I mean, so, because it's, there's two lots, there's 609, that's 609 and a half.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, so, so it, it was converted years ago, but now that, now that it ceased as a rental, it really shouldn't be, and we'll deal with that through our rental program, but the new owner is trying to move people in or, you know, with our rental program, we're trying to deal with that, so. Or that's it.
Yeah, that's, that's the only reason I say, like, always growing up, I knew there was a lady that lived there and she used that to get to that, and, I mean, just looking off of Grand Street, it looks like a lot of work for them to be able to come around the house. I mean, there's a fence they had to remove and all that other stuff. And as I say, I think if we just cease the alley after, at the edge of 609 and 615, and that should satisfy his needs and, and keep access to that garage.
There is a paved sidewalk all the way back from the front. Like, they do have to take their garbage to the back, because they're all the way to the grand street.
I'm just saying for a vehicle, I mean, even if it can't be a rental, then it's gonna be a garage. And the garage door is facing east, so then, I mean, you would literally have to...
Correct.
It'd be a giant pain in the butt, I think, for the homeowner, just all over some grass. That's what I figured, and pass that.
Yeah, well, I just wanted, if that's the case, then I just want to be able to have it, like you said, and say where my property begins, because I have a double lot right there.
I mean, if they care, then I would say scrap the whole alley, but I would hate to do that without them knowing.
No, understood.
You also own 613, right to the east of your?
Well, yeah, that's a vacant lot now, but, yes, I bought that lot, had it annexed to my property, so I own the whole lot, and with it being wide open like that in the alley back there, it's like a free run of people cutting through, and it's not so much that high school kids going to the football field that bother me, it's anything on wheels that I don't want through there, like random people. That's more my concern. And then if I can get it closed off where my property begins, that takes away that easement, and I can build a fence right up to it, and that'll help out a lot too, so.
Do we have, any, anyone reach out?
I received no, we sent out the letters, nobody called or said anything.
So do we know who owns what would be 611, it's also an empty lot?
It doesn't exist.
Yeah, that's all it is.
So you own 11, 13, and 15?
They're all empty.
Yeah.
They're condensed.
Yeah.
So you own all the way up to 609.
Okay. So, yeah, so if we stop at 609, we're not cutting off access to somebody else's?
609 is an L-shaped property, there's that house there, but, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think that'd be best, because like you said, it would cut off, like you said, access for people to go through, let's cease to exist and then...
Well, and if the alley wasn't there, I could build a fence all the way up to the property line now, so that would help. Because with the alley there, I could, I would still have to leave that open for an alley if I wanted to control the flow by putting a fence up for now, so. And then I'll still be in charge of maintaining that alley, because it is all grass. I mean, there are tire tracks, but I own my lot right there that's adjacent to it.
Only question I have on my head was, oh, that would have area. If there was a fire back there, well, that might burst from getting in another direction to put off, because there was a big fire in the woods or something. We can go off Phillip Street somewhat, but does it come up another, another thing?
Just wouldn't drive a little back there anyway.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to get back there, I would like to start a tay.
You'd be able to get in from the, from the common substation behind the football field, too.
Right, because you'd be surrounded, but you lose one access point, you still come off of Phillip Street or down. This is what you might back up. Are you gonna, are you planning on fencing all that off then, so there'll be no way to get through at all?
Well, I plan on putting just one of those, like, wooden country fences up, but nothing like that's gonna contain any wildlife, because if you're familiar back there, we have a nice family of deer.
Right.
And, you know, we actually enjoy the traffic from that, so. That's why I would hate to put a fence up, and it would just be, make more sense for me to put it at the entry point rather than at my property line.
Right, okay.
Well, I like Councilman McMullen's idea of just...
Ending it right there.
Ending, yeah. Vacating the alley from 609 going west.
We can always revisit and close the whole thing down if we want it.
Yeah, like I said, I would just like to approve the whole alley being vacated without 609's prior knowledge, because that would be a lot of work on their end if they had to readjust to that.
On the aerial map, I, I see the building you're talking about. I can't tell from this if it's a barn, if it's a garage, if it's a house. You can just see the roof from the aerial view.
It's a rental.
Yeah, it's a two-bedroom rental house down there. And Joanne, the lady that lived there for years, all of these access, they got picked up normally from the front of the house, but...
It's the short street.
Yeah, Grand Street. Yeah.
You can see the tire ruts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I don't think the city's gonna let you back there, probably since I was a kid, but...
I used to live back there too, as a youth, and I remember it, we used to back there with the horses.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I would say, the only way I would improve that, I would say, is if you cut off at 609 and pass going west.
Do we have a consensus to do that?
Can we amend the ordinance?
Yeah, we can amend the ordinance, do we need to make another motion regarding that, so we're legal? You know, maybe, what if we vote, so it's like we have a clean record. My recommendation would be to vote no on the approval, and then let's bring a new ordinance to the next meeting, so we have a nice, clean record.
Sure.
Yes, I talked to my wife, like, we can always, like, I'll agree with Matt's idea. That's fine, if we can cut it off at our property, and if we need to address it or if we have issues still, we can always come back to it, you know, but I'm perfectly fine with that, I mean, no need to make more work for everyone. You know, I mean, it's, it's not like I'm trying to cut anybody out of their property, it's just I don't want traffic to pass, so.
But we would have to write this.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just saying, like, as far as, like, my, like, my recommendations.
Paperwork issue.
Yeah.
Do I have to pay all the fees all over again, or is that?
No, we'll, no, no, we'll just, it'll just be us giving a clean ordinance, so that it's...
Yeah, no, but I'm perfectly fine with that for now, and then we can just trial by error if we end up with problems, and still have a bunch of people in summers of worries of it, so.
So we'll, we'll do a, a round of voting, we'll vote no, and then we'll bring it back, our next meeting's June 5th, and we'll do a new ordinance from 609 over, and we'll vote on that officially at the June 5th meeting. Sound good? Any other comments or questions before we do that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
No.
Geary?
No.
McMullen?
Nay.
Reed?
No.
Mayor Beattie?
Nay. Item two, resolution 2024-23, approving an award of construction contract for the 2024 Vermillion and Spring Street sewer lining project to here in Construction Goodfield, Illinois. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved, second.
Okay. Moose and Matt with a second. And we'll go into discussion.
Mayor, this is our DCO grant that we received to line the last brick sewer in Streeter here on South Vermillion, so we received, I'm drawing a blank, I think we received four bids, yeah. I, I, yeah, yeah, 450,000 is what we got. The estimated cost of the project was 575, the bid came in at 541, so, good bid, and in our budget, so recommend approval.
Any comments or questions for Jerry?
You said this is the last brick sewer?
It's the, it's the last brick sewer that still, that'll remain service, it'll just be lined, so that's the thing, unlined, last unlined sewer.
Is work gonna be done on both Spring and Vermillion, or just Vermillion at Spring?
No, it, it, so it starts, the project will start at Vermillion and Lundie, actually, and then it goes down the alley, and then it kind of meanders, it cuts across the lot and gets out to Monroe Street at Spring, so it kind of meanders again. And it ends up right in front of Pool Deck's down there, so that's the end of the limit.
So this isn't a complete reconstruction, it's just to be that liner put in?
Then that liner, they have placed inside, and then Steve hardened, and the service is real.
Right, okay.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Geary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item three, resolution 2024-24, approving an award of construction contract to Advance Asphalt Company Princeton for the MFT roadway project, which includes the mill and overlay of Fourth Street from Baker to Chappellon Street. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor and Tim Geary with a second. And any discussion?
So, this is our, our second roadway project, so if you've been up to Baker Grant Leroux, those have been coming along nice, that's our general revenue. This will be our MFT, this was in this street's budget, so again, came in under budget, so, or underestimate, which was good, so with this, our MFT project, Advance Asphalt's the one doing the paving over on East Main, and they were over there today, so, they'll stay in town and just go up there and do it, so if awarded. Thank you.
Questions? Connor?
Jeremy, on this, on this project, I talked to you about, just getting back the, the room on both sides so water can drain to the ditches on the side. That's included in this, that'd be something.
Yeah, 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 I, I talked to him about doing it, and it's pretty incidental work to make that happen, so.
Well, look underneath the driveways, make sure they're all, all those ditches are cleared.
Yeah, so, yeah, the other ones are on the south side, right there, Baker, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion or comment? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Geary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item four, consent agenda, can I get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a total fund warrant of $642,612.12?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Matt McMullen with the motion and Tim Geary with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Geary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item five is city official comments. Do you have any comments from council?
Well, I do. I don't know if I want to get into this or not, but I will. There's been a lot of chatter on social media about the decision last summer to move the 4th of July celebration to Streeter Fest, which is held first weekend in August. I was on the original 4th of July committee back in the mid-'80s when we started that up, Streeter's Fourth, America's Fest. Was very active in it for a long time, so I was as disappointed as anybody when they made that decision. Because we went a lot of years without 4th of July. Jay Armstrong started that up because he was tired of seeing people go out of town for 4th of July. Having said that, I will not, I have not, and I will not question the committee's decision, because it had to have been a tough decision to make. I've had different, been on different boards and different committees where we've had to make tough decisions and we've been criticized for it, and people don't know what goes on that precipitated those decisions all the time, and it's easy to criticize. I know a lot of people on the 4th of July committee, they're hardworking volunteers, they don't get a penny for what they do. So it had to be a tough decision for them to make, and even though I'm disappointed, I know in their hearts, they think they made the right decision, and they probably did if I knew everything that they knew. So there's this talk about, well, we're gonna flood the committee with volunteers so we can have more votes and vote it back. People wanting to start up their own 4th of July committee. You know, I love the passion, but I, I think that's the wrong thing to do. The decision's been made, you know, we've got a great group of volunteers putting on a great festival, let's back them, let's support them all we can, you know, go out there and buy the Liberty Dollars and the tickets, and don't boycott it like I've been reading on, on Facebook people are gonna do. That's the wrong thing to do, we need to support it to make sure it survives and grows. And, you know, things might change in the future and have it get moved back, but until then, I think we need to support the Streeter Fest committee as much as we can. I urge people to do that. That's just my opinion.
Dave, being part of that committee at one time or another as well, a lot of the, the talk of moving it to August came from the fact that during pandemic, a lot of the vendors and suppliers that we used to get our materials for this kind of dried up, they went out of business. So you're looking at other communities fighting and struggling to make do, make their festivals and activities just as great as ours. So the cost went through the roof. Being able to move the day, kind of open up that avenue to where these companies are a little bit more available to us, it opens up more avenues for amusements and entertainment. That's all I have to add to that, but I agree with Dave. Volunteer, they're, they're not gonna turn you down. It takes a lot of hands to get that up off the ground and running, and it may look like it's a smooth operation, but it's like a duck swimming, the little speed are just struggling under the water, so. But that's all I have to add to that.
I can tell you, I was pretty mad when I moved from high school. The first year till the second year, I was ecstatic. This is great, my neighborhood's climbing.
So if you see Randy Dominic or if you see Joe Richard, instead of criticizing and complaining, thank them for the work they do.
And I would tell you, they camp, they get no sleep, that weekend is driving to the airport to get entertainers, bringing a camper out so that you can be there 24/7 in case anything happens on the fairgrounds. That's family time, people are using their vacation hours to give back to our community and have a good celebration. In one year after COVID, we know everyone's in inflation, firework costs went up 35%. So these are the type of things that may not be visible to the public. One of our complaints is we don't have a good carnival, and the rumor was always that we kicked Jim Murphy Bluegrass out, which never happened, they sold the business. But to get a good carnival, you have to move your dates. So do we want the entertainment with the kids, or do we want to keep it not as great of an event, but the date's right? Those are the decisions that get weighed, and our entertainment is, I would, I would say, good quality, probably better than a lot of the festivals in our county. We have national touring acts, and it's, you know, I understand the, that, that's why they tried to have the parade and the Liberty Fest as well during that, to keep some of the events going for July 4th, but, yeah, it was a, I know, very hard decision for the committee to make, so I'll kick on, I'll add to you. I'll go through my comments quickly, just, again, we're going into event season, so. Streetscapes is launching an augmented reality mural on Friday at 6:00 PM at 215 East Main Street, which is, that's gonna be the Clyde Tomball mural. So if you have Instagram on your phone, you can scan a QR code and point the phone at the mural, and it will come to life. So make sure your sound's on, and we'll go. Food Truck Fest is a Saturday in City Park from noon to 7:00, and then the following weekend, we have three days of Park Fest. Also upcoming, the Central Church of Christ is working with Live Off Streeter to do a cleanup week, and so you'll see volunteers helping clean up litter in our parks, streets and everything, but that's gonna go from June 18th, or June 8th to the 15th, as well as the first Ingleland play kicks off the 19th. I will ask council, we've had a couple of things opened with parks coming up. We have Murillo Park, the design and what we want to do with a new pavilion for down there, the playground project and how that will look. Just different items that are open, so I wanted to see if you were maybe open to a special meeting? Maybe we meet at Murillo to go over some of those items. I'll kind of work with you for that, but that, that should complete. for that, um, but that, that should complete what I have, so, um, anyone else from, any other city official comments?
All right, so I'll request a motion and second to adjourn for to close session for the purpose of discussion of legal matter under five I L C S one twenty slash two of the Illinois compiled statutes for the purpose of discussing personnel. Can you get a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion, and Dave Reed with the second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
And Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.